It is 6:08. This is the reorganization meeting of the Township of Washington. In accordance with the requirements of the New Jersey statutes regarding open public meetings, notice of this meeting was legally advertised in the Courier-Post and the South Jersey Times, as well as posted in the bulletin board in the municipal building. Fire exits are located through the double doors and to the rear of the auditorium. Please silence all mobile devices. This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone who does not wish to be seen on television may be excused. This will be shown on Comcast Channel 9 every week, Sunday at 9:00 PM, Wednesday at 7:00 PM, Friday at 10:00 PM, and Saturday at 10:00 PM, and will continue until the next meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and can be found at WT-TV Productions under "Live YouTube" link. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone could please remain standing for the National Anthem sung by Antonio Brunnetti.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Or the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare The bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave? Thank you.
So beautiful, Antonio. Thank you. It is now my pleasure to introduce newly-elected Mayor Anthony Delapia, joined by his family, to the stage. I would like to ask the Honorable Jack Chittarelli, former New Jersey Assemblyman, to perform the swearing-in ceremony of Mayor-elect Anthony Delapia.
I, Anthony Delapia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Now, please welcome newly-re-elected Councilman Richard Bennett, joined by his family, up to the stage. Mr. Bennett will also be being sworn in by Jack Chittarelli.
I, Richard Bennett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I'll bear true faith.
And I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The office of councilman.
Office of councilman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to my best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Now, please welcome newly-elected Councilman Joseph Harris, joined by his family, to the stage, who will also be sworn in by Jack Chittarelli.
I wrote it down on a piece of paper right here. Check it right here. Are you sure there is? That's who I saw? Um, you might want to say if I missed anybody, please stand up so we can recognize you.
I, Joseph Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I'll bear true faith.
And I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
I will impartially.
I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The office of councilman.
The office of councilman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I would just like to make a comment that tonight's Bible was signed by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., services special. I will now take roll call. Councilman Bennett?
Here.
Councilman Brown?
Here.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Yurkis?
Present.
Councilman Delbarrello?
Here.
Mayor Delapia? At this time, I will take nominations for Council President.
I'd like to nominate Peter Delbarrello for Council President.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, can I get a motion for Peter Delbarrello as Council President?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Councilman Yurkis?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Council President Delbarrello?
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to welcome Council President Delbarrello, joined by his family, up to the stage, to be sworn in by Jack Chittarelli.
I, Peter Delbarrello III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I'll bear true faith.
I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
Governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
In this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Office of Council President.
All the duties of Council President.
According to the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Council President Delbarrello. I am handing the gavel over to you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to take nominations for the Council Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Donald Brown.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, can I get a motion for Donald Brown Jr. as Vice President?
May I make that motion?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Yurkis?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Delbarrello?
Yes.
Now, please welcome Donald Brown Jr., accompanied by his family, for the swearing-in, performed
by Jack Chittarelli.
I think you have it over there.
I vote?
You do.
Yeah?
Yes. He was right there.
How could I have doubted you? Good job?
Yeah.
Used to got my right and left. Right? The Bible right here in the air. Good to go?
Yes.
I state your name.
I, Donald Brown Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I'll bear true faith.
And I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
I will impartially.
I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Office of Council Vice President.
Office of Council Vice President.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you for your.
Absolutely.
It's great to be with you all. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year's.
Of course, we'd expect nothing less than a peaceful transition of power here in Washington Township, but that's not to say it isn't something spectacular nonetheless. Over the course of the first week of January, this procedure, the transition of power, will take place no less than 10,000 times all across this great country of ours at the municipal and county level. But the campaign is over, and the reorganization meeting is the beginning of the work that this mayor and council has to do. As we like to say in politics, particularly at the municipal level, there's no Republican or Democratic way to fill a pothole. So my very best wishes to this mayor and council in getting the job done. I know all of you are so well-intentioned with regard to serving the great people of this township, and thank you for allowing me to be part of your program here this evening. Great to be with all of you. Thank you. Jack, so much, thank you so much for that. Also, some other guests in the audience we'd like to recognize. We have a former Assemblyman, Bef Sawyer. If you could please stand. We have Assemblyman Dan Hutchinson. Is Assemblyman Cody Miller here? He's not, he's not here. Okay. We have Senator Geist here. Former Senator. Former Assemblyman Steve Altermaro is here. Is there anyone I missed? No? All right. Moving on, we have the announcements of the Township Liaisons. So this year, for 2025, the Township Liaisons are: Joe Harris will be the liaison for the Advisory Board of Economic Development. He will also be the Parade Committee and the Senior Senate Advisory Board. I'll be on the Planning Board, Shade Tree Advisory, and the Zoning Board. Councilman Rich Bennett will be Environmental Commission. He'll be Family and Community Services, Historic Preservation Committee. He'll be School Board and Sports Advisory. Councilman Yurkis will be the Green Team, MUA, Open Space, and Veterans Affairs. And Council Vice President, Donald Brown, will be Library Board, Local Emergency and Planning Board, and the Rent Living Board. Can I get a motion to approve bill list? Can I get a motion to approve bill list from January 3, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Yurkis?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Delbarrello?
Yes. Now, let's move on for the mayor, for some comments from him for the New Year. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Delbarrello. First, I want to thank Dr. Hibbs and his staff for allowing us to use this venue tonight. It is greatly appreciated. I'd like to thank the Washington Township ROTC for all their help tonight. They are truly an asset to our community. I'd like to congratulate Councilman Rich Bennett and for his reelection, and Councilman Joe Harris on his election. I am honored to have been able to be a running mate with both of you this past year. Tonight, through our hard work, we celebrate our victories together. Congratulations to my friend Peter Delbarrello for becoming Council President, and to Donald Brown for becoming our Council Vice President. I'm looking forward to working together with all of you in unison over these next few years. To the Washington Township Municipal Staff, I am looking forward to leading our team in working with you over these next four years. I've had the privilege to work alongside many of you throughout my time as a Councilman. We truly have some really great people here, and together, we will be extraordinary. I'd like to say thank you to the residents of Washington Township for having the faith and confidence in me to represent you as your mayor for these next four years. I am honored as well as humbled to be your mayor. This is your town. We are in this together. I want our residents to be involved. I'm going to be transparent. I will be accessible to anyone and everyone. I want our residents to know what we are doing, why we are doing it, and when we're doing it. I will not let you down. I will work tirelessly to make Washington Township the place you're proud to call home. I want to thank Jack Chittarelli for coming down to officially swear me in. Jack, you've always been generous with your time and supported us as a group. We consider you one of our family from up north, so it was a great honor to have you here tonight. Thank you. I want to thank Antonio Brunnetti. I haven't had one opportunity not to have goosebumps when you sing, and it was a great honor to have you sing the National Anthem, so thank you again for being here. To all my family and friends, to the many of you who have come here tonight to support me, as well as the ones who couldn't make it here tonight, I know how lucky I am to have so many people in my life who care and support me. From looking around this room, I am truly blessed, so thank you. Thank you, everyone, who worked hard to help me achieve my goal and become mayor. Without your hard work, faith, and dedication, I wouldn't be here, so thank you. Thank you to my mom. She's always been my biggest fan and supporter. I appreciate everything you've done for me throughout my life, and I love you. I wish Dad were here to see me. I know he's looking down on me as a proud father. I'm sure he will continue to look over me throughout this journey. Lastly, I want to recognize and thank my wife Dana and my kids. My daughter Gianna and my boys Anthony and Dominic. I wouldn't be sitting up here without all of your help, support, and dedication. I want to thank my wife for the amount of time she sacrifices for me to cover the kids' sports schedules, dinners, and just maintaining the household. You are my best friend. You are my rock. You're always there to listen. I don't think people realize that it isn't just me who is dedicating and sacrificing my time. It's my wife and kids that sacrifice just as much as I do. I am truly blessed and lucky to have all of you in my life, and I love you all. So thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to resolutions. The following resolutions are by consent agenda only and only require a vote for all listed. Each must be read by title. If any member of the council wishes to have one removed and heard separately, they need to indicate prior to the reading of the titles. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolutions?
Resolution 1. Resolution adopting a temporary budget. Resolution 2. Resolution fixing the rate of interest to be charged for non-payment of taxes for the year 2025. Resolution 3. Resolution approving the cash management plan and policies for the year 2025. Resolution 4. Resolution authorizing investment of idle funds and fund transfers for the year 2025. 5. Resolution allowing check authorization prior to the bill list approval for the year 2025. Resolution authorizing, oh, I'm sorry. 6. Resolution authorizing petty cash fund for the Township of Washington in the amount of $500 for the year 2025. 7. Resolution consenting to the appointment of Patrick Gersick as Chief of Police, Director of the Division of Law Enforcement for the Police Department for the Township of Washington. 8. Resolution consenting to the appointment of Blaney Donahue and Weinberg as Solicitor for the Township of Washington for a one-year term. 9. Resolution consenting to the appointment of Joseph Russo as Business Administrator for the Township of Washington. 10. Resolution consenting to the appointment of Frank Altamiro as Director of the Department of Municipal Support Services for the Township of Washington for a term of four years. Resolution appointing Anthony D. Simone as Director of Community Development, Construction Code official for a term of four years. 12. Resolution consenting to the appointment of Panoni as a Township Engineer and Director of the Department of Engineering for Township of Washington for a term of three years. 13. Resolution establishing meeting dates and official newspapers for the year 2025 for the Township of Washington. 14. Resolution establishing order of business for Washington Township's council meetings. 15. Resolution pertaining to public portions of Washington Township Council meetings. 16. Resolution of the governing body certification of compliance with the United States Equal Opportunity Commission's guideline. 17. Resolution designating Janine Smiley as Certifying Officer and Colette Backich as Supervisor of the Certifying Officer for Pension Funds for the year 2025. Resolution appointing Colette Backich as the Fund Commissioner for the Municipal Joint Insurance Fund for the year 2025. 19. Resolution appointing a Public Agency Compliance Officer for the Township of Washington for the year 2025. 20. Resolution appointing Colette Backich as Qualified Purchasing Agent for the Township of Washington for the year 2025. 21. Resolution appointing Turk Consulting LLC as the Planner and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year. 22. Resolution appointing Tryout Associates as the Affordable Housing Administrative Agent and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year. 23. Resolution appointing Dosti McGuckin, McNichols, Connors, Anthony, and Buckley as Special Counsel for Affordable Housing Matters and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year. 24. Resolution appointing the Barclay Group as the Risk Management Consultant and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year. 25. Resolution appointing Archer and Grenier PC as Bond Counsel and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year. 26. Resolution appointing King, Munch, and Collins LLP as Labor Counsel and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year. 27. Resolution appointing Holston, McDonald, Utevenus, Miles, and DiMarco Cantonio as Special Conflict Counsel and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year. 28. Resolution appointing Patrick J. Madden LLC as Special Conflict Counsel for Oprah Request and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year. 29. Resolution appointing De Nicola and De Nicola LLC as Land Use Counsel and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year. 30. Resolution appointing KG Law Group as Prosecutor and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year. 31. Resolution appointing Officers of Rex J. Rolden as the Public Defender and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year. 32. Resolution approving appointment of certain designated engineers as pool engineers for special projects and engineering matters. 33. Resolution appointing SLEO 2s and SLEO 3s for a term, a one-year term, effective January 1, 2025. 34. Resolution appointing crossing guards for the 2024-2025 school year. 35. Resolution appointing members to the Planning Board. And 36. Resolution appointing members to the Zoning Board. Resolution appointing members to the zoning board of adjustment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to approve Resolutions R 001-25 to R 036-25?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President Del Barello.
Yes. Now, moving on to old business, new business, and reports. Why don't we start down there with the council?
All righty. First off is, I would like to thank the council presidents for re-electing me for another four-year term. I would like to thank my daughter Emily, my son Andrew, my wife Pamela, friends around town, associates for helping and supporting me. I like working with the administration and the staff at our building. It is great. We have some great people. Amazing what these people do to make this town better. One of the most important things over my years of whether being in Boy Scouts or as a councilman is the giving back to your community. So, one of the things that I've always done is help residents with the help of Boy Scouts, with raking leaves in the fall, shoveling snow in the winter, and also doing the flag ceremony for Memorial Day at both Bethel and Hillcrest with the help of the Boy Scouts, the Police Department, the Fire Department, community organization, and just plain residents. I do appreciate it. Again, all I do is coordinate these events and, you know, helping people be part of that. So, over the year, I've gained a lot of knowledge and a lot of things that have been challenging. So, as the liaison to the Old Stone House, which is historical preservation, when I became the liaison, I was determined to make the Old Stone House Village a better place. And with the help of the administration and the mayor, I did accomplish getting the buildings of the church outside and inside, and also the Quay Building, and also just making sure that we get the funding through grants for the Morgan House out front, which is different than the Old Stone House Village. But I really enjoy being part of the Historical Preservation Commission. I'm just not the liaison. I work and I help at events, which they raise money to help fund that. So, at most events, you'll see me in the parking lot, cleaning up at the end, organizing in the beginning. And again, it's important that you just not be a liaison, but you're part of that, whether I'm with the HPC, whether I'm with the Environmental Group with Vicki and Leon and their group, and whether I'm part of the Municipal Alliance, or me being part of the Board of Ed, going to the Board of Ed meetings and updating the administration and the council on what's going on. But overall, I would say that Anthony's a great guy. I started with Anthony four years ago as a councilman, and we've both grown together, then adding on Jack and Don and Pete after two years, making a great group. These guys work endlessly, making this town better, and that's the key. And Joe being added on to this is going to make a difference to the community. Overall, you know, I think that it's important to people, residents, to understand is that we want to give back to the community, but also, I want to make sure residents are making sure we're aware what's going on. We can't see everything that's going on in the town, so if something's wrong, you got to let us know, because we can't patrol the whole town. We want to make this town look beautiful, make sure that the town is taken care of, and we have a great team. Also, I'd like to thank Pat at the Police Department for doing a great job taking care of the town. By far, we have the best community policing anywheres in New Jersey. Also, Pat Doggus from the Fire Department, his crew is great, making this town top-notch, whether they have the hired full-time firemen or the volunteers. I'll tell you one thing is I see an amazing, amazing teamwork in the Fire Department and also in the Police Department. These people work as a team. The family unity from the Fire Department when I go to events is incredible. So, these are things you want to keep going on and, you know, and helping make this town the best we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Bennett. Now, moving on to Councilman Joe Harris.
Well, I got to say, it's great to see so many family and friends out there. I really appreciate you coming out and supporting me and supporting the town tonight. I first would really like to thank my wife Kelly for being the backbone of our family. This allows me the time to take on this important role. She's not only my partner in life, but my partner in our businesses, and she always makes the right decisions. And if you don't believe me, you could just ask her. She's also given me three of the greatest gifts I could ever have: Leila, Luke, and Macy. I also want to thank my parents Jay and Joanne, who continue to help mold my values, beliefs, and my integrity. I'm humbled by the amount of support and direction throughout the campaign by an amazing group of people, and you know who you are. My biggest thanks is to the residents of Washington Township for trusting me to make important decisions for the community. I promise this is not a job I take lightly, and I will not let you down. When I shared my intentions to run for council, several family members and friends said, "Of course, I always saw you doing this. You're going to be great." Again, very humbling, and I promise to prove you right every day. Of course, I want to congratulate my friend Anthony Delapia, our new mayor. Give him a round of applause. And Rich Bennett on his reelection, another round of applause. I'm looking forward to working with them, as well as the other councilmen, Don Brown, Jack Yerkes, and Peter Del Barello. This is really a dream team that we have representing our town, in my opinion. In the upcoming years, we may not agree on certain issues, but it's my promise to work together in a productive manner to move forward and move the town in the right direction and continue to make Washington Township a place to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. Councilman Jack Yerkes?
Thank you, Council President Peter. I too would like to congratulate Anthony on a job well done.
Thank you.
And you're very deserving of your position now. Looking forward to this historical year. And I want to congratulate Peter on the council president, Donald, vice president, Joe on getting elected, and Rich for being re-elected again. Looking forward to working with everyone. I think you got the dream team up here, people. And we are going to work very hard for you. There are quite a few of you out in the audience that, without your support over the years, we wouldn't be up here. You all knew who you are, so I want you to give yourself a round of applause for the hard work you've given for us to make it possible to up here and represent you and work for you. We are of the people for the people. So, give yourself a round of applause. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our veterans. I am the liaison to the Veterans Committee, and I truly hold that as one of the biggest honors I could have. And every Memorial Day and Veterans Day, I get the honor of saying something, whether it's pledge allegiance or giving a speech. I want to remind everyone, Memorial Day is May 26th this year. We start at 11 o'clock. I'd like to see all of you there to support our veterans, those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, and those who were lucky enough to come back and help build this great country to what it is today. We're also up here representing them as they had represented you many years ago and the sacrifices they gave. Let's give a round to our veterans, and any veteran out there, please stand up. Any veterans? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Yerkes.
With that, thank you, Peter.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Yerkes. Moving on to Solicitor Rooney.
I've never been asked to say anything unless it's an actual direct question. Thank you, Council President. I just want to say that I'm honored to be here and to work with this great team we put together, and I'm looking forward to a wonderful 2025 and endeavor to be of assistance. So, thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Solicitor Rooney. BA Russo?
I'd like to congratulate Councilman Harris. Welcome aboard. Looking forward to working with you. Mr. Rooney, looking forward to working with you as well. It's going to be a great year. And Mayor Delapia, congratulations. I'm here, I'm going to be by your side the whole way, and thank you.
Mayor Delapia, anything else you want to say?
I think I already spoke enough, but I'm just going to be getting a little used to not intervening when you guys are talking, so I got to learn to kind of be quiet down here. But as I'm looking around, I'm humbled, I'm honored. I don't know enough words to say, but one of the things I did want to say was, everybody says politics is bad, it's dirty, but I look around this room, and I have a lot of friends in here that I didn't know until I sat up here. Everybody on this dais I did not know until I became a councilman, and I'm proud to call out on my friends. And I look through the audience, and there's a lot of people I've met through politics. And it shows that you get out of what you, from what you put in. I put in good work with good people, and I made good friends. And, you know, I just want to say thank you. I mean, the municipal people back there that, you know, I've seen for the last four years, they become friends. They're just not people I work with. And just humbled, like I said, looking around here, seeing that there's probably just as many people here I've met after politics than my friends who, you know, I've known a long time to come support me. So, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Vice President?
It's truly an honor and a privilege to sit up here amongst my family members and peers from Washington Township. Many people that I know date back to my high school years, family and friends, and it's truly an honor to serve the residents of Washington Township in this capacity. I'm thankful that I've met so many wonderful people during this journey through the campaign up until taking office and developed some long-lasting relationships with people that I will treasure forever. Most of all, my interaction with the residents, trying to help them further the interests of Washington Township and make this community even better and continue its legacy as a great community where people want to come and live. We've worked hard to improve different aspects of government. We are totally transparent, and we do want to have people attend our meetings and be with us and comment on things that they see necessary to change, and we will do our best to honor those requests that making this township continue to be better. But most of all, I do want to congratulate Mayor Delapia, Councilman Harris, and Councilman Bennett. It's truly an honor to be up here with them. We do have a great team, a dream team. We look forward every day to working and making this township better. Congratulations, Council President Del Barello, excuse me, on his reelection. He's a great leader, and he always keeps us in line and just is a very thoughtful and very thoughtful and giving person. You see him around town, you see him everywhere. You'll never not know him, especially his kindness towards everybody and his gifts he gives to the kids in the form of lollipops is, you know, I got to start carrying them. I just don't carry enough. To our township employees, you guys are the backbone of this community, and we couldn't do this without you. It's an honor and a privilege to work with you guys, and we appreciate all the hard work that you do. To our Police Department, Chief Gersick, it's a pleasure working with you and your department. You guys are the tops. Like Councilman Harris said, the community policing is by far the best in the state of New Jersey, and your officers are top-notch. To our Fire Department, Chief Doggus, you and I have had a relationship since elementary school. We grew up in the Fire Department, and you went on to be our second department chief. The men I've worked with over the years, I'm proud to say that I'm a fireman in Washington Township. I wish I could be more active, but I'm honored to be a part of that department. We have led the county and the state for years, and it's just a pleasure having you as chief. And I thank you guys for all you guys do. But most of all, I want to thank my girlfriend Nadine, who supported me. I know she's going to blush. She's been my rock. I've driven her crazy these past two years, and I thank you for her support. And to my daughters Sam and Sid, they've been there for me too through this incredible journey. So, for all those that I've met along the way, thank you for your support, guidance, and I know for the next two years and beyond, I'll be leaning on you as well. Thank you all.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Just have a couple of things to say. First, Meg and the kids couldn't be here tonight. I do have four kids, and they are younger, so they couldn't be here tonight, but I know that they're at home watching. 2025 looks so bright for Washington Township. First of all, working along Anthony, from the moment I met Anthony, you just meet somebody, and you just know that this person is somebody who's going to make a difference in your life. And when you get to spend time with somebody that, we talk five, I actually talk to him more than I talk to Meg. We talk at night, we talk in the morning. He's my first call in the morning, he's my last call at night, and it's just such a special relationship. So, to see him in this position, he's really going to shine. You're really going to be proud of your town, and you're really going to know in the direction that we're going, because Washington Township is a bunch of ordinary people doing extraordinary things. You're just an amazing group of people who really care. And, you know, we don't always see eye to eye politically, but humanly, Washington Township always sees eye to eye. I mean, what you give back as a community and what you do from stuff to cruiser, from feeding families, all the things that people come together and do in this town, it really is very humbling. It really is amazing. You are a really amazing group of people, and I think we can all say we're very honored to represent you, but we're really honored to know you and the things that you do. So, it really is, thank you for re-electing me as your council president. I promise to work really hard for you. I promise that I'll spend every single day keeping you in mind. It is a tough year. I mean, the economy is still a little tough, and we understand that, but we're always here. When we say we'll take your calls 24/7, we actually mean that. We actually want you to call us. We actually want to know what you're thinking. You have an issue, reach out. Our numbers are always available, our emails. Call us, even after hours. We're here to work together, and that's the great thing about this community, because we really do come together. We're actually 52,000 people, but we actually have a small-town feeling, which is pretty amazing. So, again, thank you all. Congratulations to Mayor Delapia. Congratulations to Joe Harris, another great addition to this council. If you meet Joe, if you know Joe, if you haven't met Joe, meet him. He's a life changer. He's somebody that you meet and you really just like. He's got an amazing family, and same thing with, and I understand why you re-elected Rich Bennett. Again, we call him the heart of our council. He's just this genuine guy who really cares, right? And then, I've known Jack Yerkes. He sold me my first house, right? And he's just an amazing guy, and to have Don as vice president, you couldn't ask for anybody better. So, I'm so humbled. I feel the same way about Chief Gersick. I feel the same way about Chief Doggus. I feel the same way about the row of all the people that work in our building. Stop by. When you get to know these people, when you get to work with them every day, the clerk next to me, Chrissy, she's an amazing person. She takes my calls eight, nine o'clock at night. She cares about the town. These are people who truly care. Nancy's out there, somebody else who cares about the town, right? These are just amazing people. So, thank you so much. It's truly an honor to represent you. Looking forward to 2025, and I hope everybody else is as well. There will be a meet and greet afterwards with some light refreshments, right, as you walk out of here. I'm wishing everybody a happy new year, happy and healthy new year. We're going to move on now to our public participation. There is a microphone up here. If anybody would like to come up, please come up and state your comments. Just state your name and your address for the record.
Make a motion to open to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public who wish to speak and say anything? Seeing none? Make a motion to close to the public?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is now adjourned. Our next meeting will be on January 22nd, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Motion for adjournment?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1790.41] Thank you, everyone.[1765.46]